I'll call you, you call me.
Yeah, I'll take your over.
Alrighty, thank you, Dwayne. Good morning, welcome to our September fifteenth meeting. Appreciate each one being here this morning. If you would, just take a second and put your phone on silent, would be well appreciated. As always, we'll open up in a word of prayer and it'll be led by Mr. Sam Hodges along with a pledge by Mr. Will Sly. So if you would, please stand. Thank you, Mr. Sam.
Bow our heads, please. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come here today as a republic and to Madison County as your children, Father, to worship you, to do as you want us to do, to love thy neighbors, and live together, work together, be together. Pray, Father, you be with us through this Board of Supervisor meeting. Bless all the leaders here, Lord, with the right decisions and be present with us today, Lord. Watch over our loved ones wherever they are and watch over our country. Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Clark, I see you're filling in this morning for Mr. Lot?
Yes, Mr. President. You have before you the September the second, two thousand twenty-five Board Minutes. Would ask that you review those, deem appropriate.
Okay. Are there any changes to the Board members' minutes for September the second? If not, do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
Motion Supervisor Banks to have a second. Second Supervisor Brandon, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Concerned citizens? Greg, do we have any?
No, sir.
Okay. Next on the list is the Schedule Matters of Business, the Resolution for Coming in the Week of September seventeenth through twenty-three as Constitution Week. Greg?
Correct. And the resolution is attached there, what we're asking for is this board approve the following resolution. Whereas September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five marks the two hundred and thirty-seventh anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is a fitting, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I Gerald Steen, by virtue of the authority vested in me as President of the Madison County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian, through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained.
Okay, thank you, Greg, and do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
Motion Supervisor Banks, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second Supervisor Brandon, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Thank you, Greg. Next, we have a public hearing on Hemp Hill Construction. Do I have a motion going to the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion Supervisor Griffin, I'll second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? We're now in the public hearing, Mr. Clark, if you would, just bring us up to date on what we hear.
Yes, sir. You've got before you today a conditional use permit application submitted by Hemp Hill Construction. Mr. Brandon Brown is here on behalf of Hemp Hill as the proposed operator of this mining operation and the landowners are here as well. Just to locate you a little bit, this is off of Pisgah Bottom Road, which in between fifty-five and Highway sixteen. It's a larger parcel of property, but the property that they're seeking for the actual operation is sixteen point six-two acres. We have published for the hearing today, all of their application is in proper form. So if you've got any questions of me or Mr. Brown, he's here to take those.
All right, I guess, Brandon, you gonna be the spokesperson or Sam?
We both can.
Okay.
Okay.
Just either one, just kind of tell us a little bit about the project and what you're doing with the project.
What it is, is that Mr. Hodges has, wants to improve a lake. It's approximately about six acres total of the total tie-down of what it is. We had previously come to and asked about doing it. You know, we're gonna build him a lake and turn around and walk away from it, that's really all we're doing. So, actual impact will probably be, you know, a little less, a lot less than sixteen acres, but we're going through the appropriate ways with that.
Mr. Hodges?
Yes, sir, I'd like to. So back in August of last year, I want to just kind of give you guys the timeline. We started doing the testing of the dirt, the environmental stuff, went through all the process we're supposed to go to to get the permits. Permits were signed February, March. And we've been waiting for the rain to stop, as everybody has, it works outside. And then about June thirtieth is when Mr. Griffin sent Albert Jones to stop the work, check the permits. Permits were good, went back to work. July twenty-second, Mr. Griffin sent Albert Jones back out, stopped the work at Pisgah Bottom Road and basically for no reason other than a neighbor complaining and we needed to call the board and have a public hearing. July thirtieth, Hemp Hill requested the hearing, which is here we are. August fourth, Mr. Griffin had to extend, continue the meeting because he had a conflict. And then on eight eighteen, Mr. Griffin changed the hearing to nine two, to nine fifteen, nine fifteen, here we are fifty-six days later. And if you add all up together, we're about dang near a year before we got our work done. And if no disputes between these timelines or questions regarding those timelines, then we can get on with this hearing.
Okay. Are there any other, anyone else like to speak in favor or opposition?
No, everything been said that I was gonna say.
Okay. All right, I'm not sure who that was speaking back there.
Mr. Bob.
Mr. Bob?
No, sir, I'm gonna give a long speech this morning, but it's everything that I was gonna say was said, so.
Sir.
Okay.
Sir, if you're gonna speak, you need to come up.
Come on up to the front. I didn't know you were gonna give your speech back there, but that's okay, come on up and tell us your name and.
I'm Bob Tompkins. I'm an artist, a painter, and a teacher, and I got a studio in Gluckstadt where I teach, I got about sixty-five adults I teach oil painting to. And I'm Sam's neighbor. I own sixty acres and he owns, and they're joining each other. And everything's been said that I was gonna say, it's just that I don't think, I think Sam and Hemp Hill have been wronged. What they did, what y'all did to them, to me was an un-American thing. And that's all I was gonna say anyway, so.
Okay, are there any questions?
So, I just wanna, so this, I thought this was mining for dirt. So basically, you have a lake that's moderate size, you want it to be a significantly bigger lake and you are selling the dirt?
No, sir.
Digging a hole and making a bigger lake?
So the lake, the existing lake there is over a hundred years old and it leaks. The dam leaks all the way across, it's only two and a half acres. So to repair the dam, I gotta call somebody anyway to come and dig the dang thing out, cause back a hundred years ago, they didn't court right. So in exchange for repairing my lake, I wanted to exchange the dirt for the work. That's all it is, no money exchanged. Talked to Mr. Brandon, they came out, tested the dirt, the dirt was perfect for Bozeman Road and Reunion Road. He said, perfect, we can take the good dirt, put on the road construction at Reunion and Bozeman. We bring all the clay that's the bad dirt to your pond and it'll seal it up. And we went ahead and made it bigger to provide more of the good dirt. So it's gonna be a bigger lake than two and a half acres, we gotta move the dam anyway.
It'll be about eight acres when it's finished.
So.
We're building the levees out of the, yeah, it's coming off of Bozeman.
And we got all the permits, the environmental, state, county, road permits, everything. Waiting for the rain to stop. Rain stopped and we were shut down. And that's why we're here.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Yeah, most of, the thing what you said was true. But there was a little step in there of a permit from the county. Some way or the other, you ended up with the wrong permit. And after the phone call kept coming on Pisgah Bottom Road, about a dirt pit being been out there, that they hauling dirt tail up the road, I got the call to Scott Weeks, that's older director. He couldn't find no permit, I didn't remember one coming for this board. And end up y'all had the wrong permit. So that's why we are here today. Yeah, last meeting I did have a conflict. And I talked to several of the neighbors out there and I told them what you were looking to do was build a pond. And at a certain time, you were gonna be gone. It wasn't gonna be a costly dirt pit out there. And they was able to live with that, with a couple, a few things that they would like to see. One is a flag person at the intersection that white way, coming out of the driveway.
We will have that.
And make sure that the flag person is stopping the trucks, not the cars to come through. Let the cars go through, then the truck come through. Keep the dust down and God might change it to mud, you wanna keep the mud off the road.
We'll do that.
And fix the road after y'all leave out for the portion that y'all use, from where y'all come out to Highway sixteen west.
We have a road bond on the road already.
You have a road bond on it?
Yes.
Yes, sir, we got the insurance.
Okay. And if it inconvenience, you're unapologized for Madison County. But those citizens out there had the right to come and go without dust and trucks about to force them off the roads. And so, right now, after we done made all the step, the correct step and the citizen gonna be happy on these items that we just spoke of, I make the motion to approve it. But keep in mind, it is, I think our policy is you approve for one year. And I'm not gonna be interested in renewing this. So make sure you get your pond dug within one year.
Up today.
Yeah, up today. That's my motion.
Mr. Griffin, would you hold your motion till we come out?
Oh, come out in public here, yeah.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor or against? If you would, please come up and state your name and give your address in a couple of minutes, please.
Hello, my name is Renald Johnson, I live at six ninety-six Pisgah Bottom Road.
Six ninety-six?
Six ninety-six. Matter of fact, I'm right across the street from his property and I have no complaints.
Okay.
None at all.
Thank you, sir.
I must spoke to your neighbor, there was a house right across there. That I did speak to, he was cutting his grass. I didn't see you, I would've remembered your face and.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. All right, if not anyone else, I'd like to have a motion to close the public here.
Motion.
Motion Supervisor Griffin, I'll second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve or not approve.
I make the motion to approve.
Got a motion Supervisor Griffin to approve, but do I have a second? Second Supervisor Banks. And Mr. Griffin, that is, part of your motion, as you indicated, was to have a flag person out on the road to stop the trucks. Mud, keep the mud off the road.
And dust.
And the dust.
Whatever it is.
And repair the road once the job is finished.
Yes.
I have, I have one question, what permit we were wrong on, just for my own need, because it was a pond repair and we got the permit approved for that, but they call it a mining permit because they're digging the dirt and hauling it out. What, what was the difference between the permits that we should ask?
From my understanding, you had a logging permit, to haul logs. There are different permits.
That was not told to us when we were, when we evolved, we didn't, that was not told to us.
Because all the papers we have say mining permit on.
All right, we have a motion on the table, we can get to that and finish that, but we have a motion on the table at this point. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, all opposed?
I think you went to the wrong, the wrong office and got the wrong permit.
Should've been through the planning and zoning, and I think that's where the indication was, because
then they would've gone over these three items with you.
Yes.
At that point. So I, I think it's just, you know, it's just a little misdirection.
We'll be finished very quickly.
Yeah, and keep in mind, we still fast-track y'all, cause y'all could've been sent back to the planning board that would've took six weeks longer than did and came to us. After that, where they goof up, we fast-tracked you to get here.
And, and I know Mr. Bob come up and said it was un-American, what this board did, guys, this board didn't do anything. If we'd've gone through the correct process, so y'all would have. Then we would've been through this and it'd been over with, you know, a while ago. So, but anyway, this is where we are, we approved it today and now it's time to get to work and finish the job. Thank y'all.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Next on the item is consent items. Anyone like to remove any item on the consent? If not, do I have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion Supervisor Griffin, I'll second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Supervisor Baxter, I think you have item thirty and thirty-one.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to appoint Mallory, Mall, Mallory Ladner to the Madison County Library Board. I believe Greg has all her information, that'll be my motion.
Got a motion Supervisor Baxter, do I have a second? Second Supervisor Banks, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
I'd like to appoint Stephen Summers to the Megasite Fire Board. I believe Greg has all his information also, that'll be my motion.
Got a motion Supervisor Baxter, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second Supervisor Banks, discussion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
While you're on Fire Board, I would like to make a motion to reappoint April Love to the Central Fire District.
All right, we have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second Supervisor Banks, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
That's item number forty, Greg, do you, do we have anybody else that's?
Yes, Mr. President, if you don't mind, I suppose we're gonna take item forty.
No, we'll take item forty.
Since we're here anyway, all right. For the Central District, there are two additional appointments that need to be made. Their attorney and the president of their board are here, but, but there will be two additional appointments that need to be made today, yes, sir.
Other than April Love?
Other than April Love, yes, sir.
Who are they, Greg?
One of them was Robert Jackson and the other is Chief Hughes, if I'm not mistaken. And I'm not mistaken, that's great.
I'd like to go ahead and appoint Robert Jackson and Chief Hughes back to that board, they're doing a great job.
All right, we have a motion on the table, do I have a second? Second Supervisor Griffin, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Thank you, Greg. All right, we're gonna move back up to item thirty-two now. Election Commissioner, Ms. Joanne?
Good morning, I'm Joanne Pearson, Election Commissioner for District Three for Madison County. I'm here to request that you approve the move of Precinct Three O Two from the Mark Apartments at seven eleven Lake Harbor Drive, Ridgeland to Mount Charity Baptist Church at nine fifty-four Lake Harbor Drive, Ridgeland, effective December third, two thousand twenty-five. In the meantime, we have received a request from Mark Apartments asking to be terminated as a polling precinct. The Mount Charity Baptist Church facility will accommodate the voters and they are looking forward to working with us. There are approximately two thousand eight hundred twenty-five active voters in Precinct Three O Two.
Okay, I'll make a motion for approval, do I have a second?
I'll second, I have a question.
Okay, Second Supervisor Banks, and this will go in effect December the second of this year.
What's the day of, if there is a runoff, it'll be, what, December first or second? So we are the, we are making this effective the day after that and Mark Apartments are willing to have the special election there in November.
That answered my question.
Do what?
That answered my question.
All right, I, I, yeah, I just want to make sure that this year, anyone that votes at the Mark Apartments will continue to vote there.
They will continue to work there.
This year.
For the November special election, yes.
Okay.
We will not move it until after, after that.
Good deal, thank you. Got a motion on the floor, have a second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? And we're gonna back up to item thirty-two as far as moving the election equipment, would you like to say anything on that?
Unfortunately, I have not been the one working on that, so I, I know that they have been trying to figure out how many pieces of equipment we'll need at each precinct.
All right, I'll make a motion for approval, do I have a second? Seconds, Second Supervisor Banks, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, Cornelius?
Good morning, Bill.
Good morning.
I just got a proposal on some old equipment they're returning to auction off. And I got two proposals, one is Thomas Auctioner, the card Esco, and the other is Jeff Morton. And I want to get the board to accept the auction. And Thomas, he gave us a guarantee price of seven hundred fifty-two thousand for the equipment and Jeff Morton gave us a price of six hundred eighty-two thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve for Thompson Auction out of Kansas.
Thomas.
Thomas? Auction out of Kansas, Mississippi. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
What a question.
Second Supervisor Banks, discussion.
Are they gonna come get their equipment?
Yes, sir, they waiting on us, ten minutes.
That's a big plus right there, they come and get it, all right?
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? All right, Mr. Tim Bryan?
Good morning.
Good morning.
First item I have, excuse me, is a modification of the two thousand twenty-five unfunded road plan. This is to add Spring Creek Road.
I'll make a motion for approval, do I have a second? Second Supervisor Banks, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
All right, next item I have is to board order, closing out the State Aid Virilla Road Overload Project. This is to close out the project, release the contractor from maintenance. Also request that the board president be authorized to sign the board order and the attached letter to this.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion Supervisor Banks, do I have a second? Second Supervisor Brandon, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
All right, final item I have is a request to perform some maintenance off of county right-of-way. This is at one nineteen Sugar Lane. We're doing some erosion work at one nineteen Sugar Lane, we need to get off of right-of-way approximately twenty-five feet to do a little erosion work that will help stabilize the bank off the, to help stabilize a pipe that's going underneath the road. So we need to get off right-of-way a little bit on that particular property.
I'll make a motion for approval, do I have a second? Second Supervisor Banks, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Mr. Espy?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Two weeks ago, the board voted to appoint Justin Lancaster as the Constable District Ford of Madison County. And also you ordered that there need not be any election in November for that position, because he's the only candidate that the Electoral Commission certified of that position. So you, you've already ordered it, but for it to really happen, the Secretary of State's office needs an order from the board certifying that you did all that. And I prepared the order, once you approve it, it'll go to Secretary of State and that will take care of the matter.
Okay, I'll make a motion for approve of the order. Do I have a second? Second Supervisor Banks, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Greg?
All right, morning, Board, just one thing for you today, since we already knocked out item forty. The one I have for you is item thirty-nine, and that is a request that this board approve a grant modification form. You heard last meeting about MACWA's plans to reallocate some funding. This is the paperwork to ensure that they can keep the state funding as part of that project.
I'll make a motion for approval, do I have a second? Second Supervisor Banks, discussion, all in favor?
I'm gonna vote no on this based on previous statements, so.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Brandon. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
No.
All right, thank you.
All right, Nason? Controller?
Good morning. The first item I have for you is number forty-one, which is to propose the budget amendments and to enter fund cash transfers.
I'll make a motion for approval, do I have a second? Second Supervisor Banks, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
The next two items is one general claims docket and one payroll docket.
Make a motion on that.
Motion Supervisor Banks, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Supervisor Griffin, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Mr. Banks, would you take item forty-four, please?
All right.
Item forty-four?
Yes, sir, that's the last one, which is the leap for claim docket.
Can we get a motion on the end of gas bill?
I'll second. I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. Ronnie, a little lot?
Nothing, Mr. President, Vice President.
I share.
Morning, just have two items, and they are both billing to DOC. One is the month of June of two thousand twenty-five for one thousand eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. And the second is for the month of July, two thousand twenty-five, for two thousand three hundred thirty-nine dollars and eleven cents. If we could just acknowledge those, I'll present those to your clerk.
Do I have a motion to, for acknowledgement?
I'll make that motion.
Supervisor Banks, do I have a second? I'll second it, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Old business, new business? Do we have executive session for anything?
Yes, couple of right-of-way acquisitions.
All right, have a motion go into closed termination. Supervisor Banks, I'll second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? At the same time, I'll take a motion, entertain a motion for executive session. I'll make that motion, do I have a second? Second Supervisor Banks, discussion, all in favor?
All right, here, you come ahead.
Alrighty, Mr. Clark?
Yes, Mr. President, in executive session, the Board of Supervisors took one action on two parcels of property to establish just compensation for right-of-way acquisition. The first are both related to the Bozeman Road Phase Two project. The first one is zero eight two I dash thirty dash zero zero three, forward slash zero three dot zero 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 W. Is that the Bozeman, the first one, okay? Is the Mini J Bozeman Limited Family Trust, I believe that is, at twenty-two thousand dollars. The second being parcel number zero eight two I dash three zero dash zero zero one, forward slash seventeen The second being parcel number zero eight two I dash three zero dash zero zero one forward slash seventeen dot zero 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 W for Mr. Charles Lack at that just compensation of twenty-eight thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Motion was made by Mr. Banks, seconded by Mr. Steen, with all voting aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clark. With that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn September thirtieth at nine a.m.?
Motion.
Motion Supervisor Baxter, Second Supervisor Banks. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?